This is a regular school board meeting of the Tri-City United School Board. Tonight is Monday, November 13th, 2017, and we're located at the TCU High School Bandroom. Roll call finds all present, and we'll move on to our administrative report.
They're looking for some things, so I'm going to hit some of the highlights because I have to tell you, they're, you know, it, I know that I live what's going on here each day, but it feels so good to read through these and to hear directly from our principals and directors about the outstanding work that's happening throughout our district and with our staff. Oh, there we go. So I really do encourage our community members to take a moment to read through them, as I know that this is out there for all of our board and our community. But I'm going to hit a highlight in each area, but one of the other pieces I want to highlight for you as a board is you're going to find that some of the action steps they're going to share are happening. You are also going to see in my, in our district goals, action steps, superintendent goals, action steps later on, so you can really see that alignment happening. TCU Montgomery is sharing that they're doing something new this year with their after-school program for their students in grades five through eight, and offering the program both at the location at TCU Montgomery and also at TCU Lonsdale. So that's been a barrier in the past for our students who come over from Lonsdale. And so they're able to have a teacher who's going to meet the students over at TCU Lonsdale as the students, of course, catch another bus, and they're then able to have that extended day supports from a teacher as well. So it's, that's a great news and a real credit to the work and idea generating from TCU Montgomery. Thanks for doing that. At TCU La Center, highlighting one I hit, I know you've heard about the brick and mortar words. Fits really well with tonight as Mr. Mink and Mr. Schroeder are going to be sharing some of the facilities and projects works actually with brick and mortar and some of the tuck pointing. So I thought it was kind of a good little segue there. But you're going to hear in my goals and action steps about depths of knowledge and costas, levels of understanding. That's exactly what's happening throughout our district, and Brian highlighted that as some of the work happening at TCU La Center. At our high school, one of the focuses in the last couple of early outs have been about topical essential questions and also our collaborative learning team. Again, essential questions and deepening our levels there is something that as a district we're working on. Also want to bring attention to everyone, our spring semester, last spring semester, academic lettering breakfast is this Wednesday morning at 7:15 here at TCU High School. And so, of course, everyone's invited to attend that. At TCU Lonsdale, some of the deep work that they're doing throughout our curriculum, guaranteed viable curriculum, is revising systems and structures in response to intervention. That's something that Ms. Myers worked greatly and deeply on before, but also very highly done at TCU Lonsdale, and so they're just reviewing those structures to ensure we're meeting students' needs. Within our communications department, I know that Ms. Vogel shared with all of you our winter-spring newsletter. It should be coming out in the mail this week, so really encourage all of our community members and residents to take some time and read about the great things happening in our district. I know that's one of the things we've heard over and over from our surveys, in particular our community survey, is that there are great things happening that people don't know about it. And so being loud and proud about the work and accomplishments is something we're really striving for. Within our community education program and department, we have our fall, or our winter, I should say, winter-spring brochure catalog coming out in the next few weeks. I'm learning there, Mark. We're also, something that Mr. Preising's been working on with Region Nine is developing and preparing for a forum on race, which is really a whole regional kind of meeting. This is going to be a smaller group for this to prepare for a large group session on this in March of next year. So really important for us to be hosting that and bringing this kind of conversation to light for our communities. Within our business office, just want to highlight a few things. As you know, we've been finishing up the audit in preparation for our truth and taxation and also for our audit report on our December 11th board meeting, but I wanted to share something that's been on our radar for a while to do, and Ms. Capp has led the way within our district office staff, and all of our district office staff have been contributors in creating an electronic administrative guidebook. And basically, its intent is that it's a piece for onboarding for new hires, in particular, not just within our administrative ranks, but also with all of our staff. So it's kind of that one place to go for things, hiring, purchasing, all kinds of things. It's got multiple links to it, and people have already commented on how valuable it is. Within our Tahoe Food Service, once again, they're going to be providing local families with a Thanksgiving meal. We have 34 meals that are going to be donated by Tahoe, and this is their third year of, with this Pay It Forward campaign. Would really encourage if you have a chance to read through the story of where this came from, with kind of positives coming out of a pretty sad tragic accident, and the commitment that they've had to paying it forward and bringing food to families. And so that was really an impactful story to share. And these turkey meals include serving for four, turkey, mashed potatoes, gravy, stuffing, green beans, the whole shebang. So really excited that some of our families are going to benefit from this. And within our special services department, I think the word to summarize it is collaboration. Some of the pieces that they're really being intentional about within our English, as a second language program, and our social workers, and expanding all the way across the district, and so really appreciate the work happening there. So hitting a highlight from each, there's much more there, but as I said, it just makes you feel good about what's happening here and something that we can really be proud of.
All right, next we'll move on to approve the agenda. I have a motion by Ashley Receval, second by Chris DeGeddel, to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion has passed, 7-0. Next, we move on to our consent agenda. First up is our approval of our minutes of, well, it would have been October, what? Ninth, tenth, something like that?
Ninth.
Ninth? That's not written on here. October 9th, 2017 School Board Minutes. Personnel under new hires, we have Tyler Asher, Kid Zone Aid in Lonsdale; Penelope Orr, Cooks Helper in Montgomery; Kayla Claffey, an EL paraprofessional in Lee Center; Tim Etchens, Technology Assistant in Lee Center in Montgomery; Kathy Cosina, part-time Kid Zone Supervisor in Lonsdale; Nicole Terrell, paraprofessional at the high school; Alyssa Hoffman, long-term subs in kindergarten at the Montgomery School; Amy Alberg, Head Speech Coach; Peter Rogotzky, volunteer football coach; Diane Tiddy, 7th grade girls' basketball coach; Carol Lilla, Spirit Team Advisor for Homecoming; Erin Buckingham, a youth soccer program coordinator; Teresa Collins, English Language Arts Long-Term Sub at the high school; Erin Winters, English Language Arts at the high school; Annika Redman, volunteer dance coach; and Roz Carson, the Cooks Helper at the high school. Change in hours, Jim Simonette, Cooks Helper in Lee Center; and Darlene Dietz, Cooks Helper at the high school. Leave of absence, Sheila Davids, an ECSE paraprofessional in Montgomery; employment ending, Judy Miller, retirement, Cooks Helper at the high school; and Jamie Wollin, resignation of 8th grade girls' basketball coach. We have one contract, our TCU Technology Assistant for the 2017-19 school years. Under policies, we have her second and final reading, 521 Student Disability Non-Discrimination, 602 Organization of School Calendar and School Day, 607 Organization of Grade Levels, and 903 Visitors to the School Buildings. Approval of the bills of $1,040,043.53, and also our finance report. I would seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Kevin Huber, second by Dale Bass, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion has passed.
Madam Chair, I do want to just make a quick recognition from our consent agenda. As you can see, Judy Miller has, is going to be retiring, and want to recognize, this was her 30th year of service, working within our Food Service Department, and really appreciate her commitment and dedication to our students and providing healthy meals and being a team player. That's a, that's a long time, and Judy has done an outstanding job, so just wanted to take a moment to recognize her as well.
Wonderful. All right, next we'll move on to our Titan Pride Awards, and I don't know who's presenting.
Well, I'd ask Mrs. Dwyer to come forward first, and then we'll get Mr. Grandsteiner.
Good evening, board members. Superintendent Preisler, I would like to recognize my counselors and social workers, so if they could come up, Shelby Murray, Rachel Fornier, and Kyra Yoder. Many of you know that October was Bullying Prevention Month, and these three people have taken on our initiative of getting the message out for anti-bullying to an all-new level this year. They are organizing classroom visits, they organize our Unity Day, where the students and staff wore orange in support of anti-bullying and promoting togetherness and acceptance. This year, they even coordinated a walk to show unity, where the entire K8 students and staff walked around the block with posters and to show their unity and their promotion of anti-bullying in our school, which was the first ever, which was phenomenal. They also organized, on October 31st, Halloween Day, it's crazy enough the way it is with that day, they organized a mix-it-up at lunchtime for our entire kindergarten through 8th grade. So what they did is they put little sentence, or topic starters, conversation starters, on the table. We kind of decorated up the lunchroom a little bit, and with the help of the sentence starters and some of our teachers for our kindergarten and first grade students who couldn't read all of this, the conversation starters, they sat with someone new. They were given either a number or a color, and that's the table that they were supposed to sit at, and we mixed it up, and kids got to talk to people that they normally don't talk with. I have to say that 7th and 8th grade, it was probably the quietest lunchtime that we've had, but we didn't get any pushback. The kids actually did enjoy themselves and met some new people, and we now see kids sitting with other students since that time. So I just really want to recognize them for their hard work just in October, but it doesn't stop there. They're ready to take our anti-bullying and acceptance to another level and continue to do monthly, quarterly, different activities with all of our students. So they really, really stepped up to the plate, and I'm very proud. They would come and say, can I, I said, "It's yours, fly with it," and that's exactly what they did. So they showed great leadership, creativity, and a lot of dedication to expressing a message to all of our students and staff that we're all in it together. So, thank you, I appreciate your hard work. So Kyra Yoder, congratulations. You get to go around and shake all of the hands. Rachel Fornier?
Thank you so much, Kyra.
Thank you so much for your work. Shelby Murray?
Thank you, Rachel.
Appreciate your leadership.
Thank you.
We're going to stay standing.
We're going to stay standing. Unless Brian's going to talk a lot.
Boy, I've got free.
Okay, then, let's sit down.
Appreciate that. Or you'll appreciate that, one of the two. I'd like to have Mr. Bryce Brunz up here tonight. Superintendent Preisler, board, thanks for allowing me the opportunity to share this Titan Pride Award with Mr. Bryce Brunz. As a physical education teacher, and as well as a student support teacher, you've done an awesome job of incorporating Titan Pride values into your classroom, I-can statements, brick and mortar vocabulary, costas, levels of questioning, and demonstrating these things for students in each FIED class, which is outstanding. A lot of times you think of that work being done in a language arts class or a math class, but it's happening every day in a FIED class, which is quite impressive to see. It has been awesome to see how you've integrated the district's direction to increase rigor and levels of application and concepts into your physical education units and lessons. You've been a leader within our RTI program. You've not only guarantee, or gathered and interpreted behavioral data, but also dissected that for the PBIS team to make great decisions for our entire school. You've been instrumental in creating structures and supports, including a check-in and checkout system with our students each morning. He meets with a number of students to see how their day is, to set goals for the day, and checks out with them at the end of the day to make sure that they've reached their goals throughout the day. We've seen a significant decrease in referrals to the main office as a result of some of these things Bryce has done. Our students are learning skills and building confidence because of your work. Thank you for your continued efforts to meet the needs of all students in our school, no matter what challenges those students might face. You truly make a difference within our school, and we're so proud of you. Congratulations, Mr. Brunz.
Thank you. Mr. Krasinski.
The next person I'd like to introduce to the school board is Mr. Kyle Krasinski, School Counselor at TCU Lee Center. As a student support educator, you have been a leader in developing student support systems and structures in our school. You're excellent at communicating and have done a great job within the RTI program. You each day really work hard to meet the needs of our diverse and challenged individuals in our school. You're always calm, caring, thoughtful, insightful when you're working with our students, and you focus on their individual learning opportunities. You work on their skill development and also supporting them on whatever they might need in each day. Our students are having success academically and socially emotionally within our school because of your work. You have been an excellent communicator with our parents as well. Thank you for your continued efforts to meet the needs of our students, no matter what their challenges might be. You really make a difference in our school. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you so much.
And the last person I want to introduce here this evening is Mrs. Jeannie Traxler. She is a very humble educator, and this is probably absolutely killing her to be up here to get recognition tonight, but that doesn't mean it doesn't need to be done, okay? Jeannie is a 2nd grade veteran teacher at TCU Lee Center. Also, she would never call herself this, but I'm just going to speak the facts here, the Veterans Day Coordinator at our school. As an educator, Jeannie meets the needs of our students in a very thoughtful way. You do an excellent job of communicating with students and families, and you're always there to make sure kids get exactly what they need when they need it. At TCU Lee Center, as the Veterans Day Coordinator, you've been an integral part of creating a special presentation for our local veterans. You honor them, and you really make them feel at home and welcome and that their service is appreciated. Whether it's phone calls for the presentation, getting everybody organized and lined up, creating the program, working with the music department to get the music just right, setting up the food, the cookies, the coffee for the veterans, getting the art department, getting it looking beautiful, coordinating our staff in all of the responsibilities that they have, you just do it through a lens of making sure that we always honor veterans the best we can. And your work has been so unselfish in the name of honoring others. You truly care about others, and that is what makes you great. Thank you for your continued efforts to meet the needs of all of our students and our community members. You make a difference in the school, and we're just really proud of you. Thanks, Jeannie, for all you do.
Thank you.
You've made so many wonderful comments.
Oh, thank you.
I want to make you feel great.
Oh, you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeannie.
Thank you.
Thank you for those wonderful tributes to our staff, and we're fortunate to have staff like, who is represented tonight throughout our entire district, so thank you very much. Appreciate that.
All right, next we'll move on to the open forum, and I believe at this time there isn't any request to speak in front of the board, so we'll move on to our informational items. And first up, we have Mr. Mink and Mr. Schroeder here for Facilities Projects and Maintenance Overview, 2017.
Dr. Preisler, school board administrators and community members, my name is Carl Mink, Director of Information Technology and Facilities at TCU. Joining me this evening is Mr. Eric Schroder. He is our Buildings, Grounds, and Maintenance Supervisor. And I really enjoy these types of things, because we get a chance to show you guys and illustrate for the community what it is that our teams are working hard on, particularly during the summer months, when people feel as though the school is closed. But that really is when we do all of our heavy lifting and planning. So as we look at this, the areas that I'm going to be touching on with Eric this evening are the areas of facilities and maintenance that have evolved over the last three, four years, and those include health and safety, deferred maintenance, operations and site improvement capital, something called LTFM, no, that's not Light FM, as in the music, but long-term facilities maintenance, and some Fun2 projects that we partnered on this year. What I'd like to do is start with just an overview list of what some of the big rock items were that we accomplished this summer. Certainly not comprehensive, and it's not inclusive of all of the things that our teams do day in and day out, to ready classrooms, to paint classrooms and hallways, and do those types of regular annual maintenance, but these are the larger projects that we had accomplished this summer. As we look at this, I'm going to zoom it up for you. The top component has been a deferred maintenance capitalized and a long-term facilities maintenance issue that I've been familiar with for about 25 years. I have two generations of personally installing a gymnasium PA system in La Center, and every time I got done and down from installing that, I was covered from head to toe with dust and detritus and accumulations. And when you look at things at the ceiling height, 36 feet above you, at eye level, there's literally a carpet layer of crud that sits on our joists, all of the equipment that we have for sports, HVAC and ductwork. And I thought to myself, someday I'd like to take care of this somehow, and the opportunity presented itself to us this year because we also had a need, deferred maintenance need, to do some painting in our large spaces and condos. When you go up 8, 10 feet on a piece of block and you take your finger and you go along a grout line, it's covered with hair and dust and film. So we wanted to make sure that when we did the paint jobs with epoxy paints, that we had surfaces that would receive it and adhere that paint for a long time, so that down the road, our crew, or our crews, excuse me, could do the washing, maintenance, and touch a painting as it came up. That was done across TCU in each of our gymnasiums, our common spaces, our areas that have high bay area where we don't have the equipment to remove, to capture, and get that stuff out of the building. In addition to that, we had commercial painting done with those that also had the equipment to reach those high areas and do a good quality job of that work. Down below, you'll see a list of items that are district-wide projects. Some of them are titled by area, but the majority of these were work that were done across the sites to include things like grounds and maintenance, outside work, reseeding after salt kills. We had some exterior and inside downlight LED retrofits. Those are things that provide a very good payback on our operational sides because they're 83% efficient. It's yet to be seen, but we're hoping for 30 to 40 years of life out of those fixtures without having to get or hire lifts and equipment to replace the bulbs and things of that sort. We had some air handling units, which will have pictures of, you know, the acronyms here don't mean a lot to you, but MAUs and RTUs and HVAC stuff, we're going to touch on very briefly with some photo and some, a good up close detail on what was done. We also had some tactical fixes and rearrangements to provide some more classroom space here at the high school. Knowing that we're going to one-to-one, we took advantage of a fixed PC lab now becoming a maker space and a creative lab for PLTW Robotics. And then we partnered with a few agencies along the way where we could to share costs and opportunity. Adam Larson's involved in a prairie restoration project out at our Lonsdale facility, and while that crew was on-site, we had them clear all of the invasive species that are around those ponds as you drive in, that were blocking sightlines and traffic lines at the intersection, and it was a very cost-effective solution for that. With that, I'd like to go back here and take a look at what the impetus was, what Eric and I looked at as our primary motivator. This is the results from the staff survey that we did as part of our research for the referendum. Eric and I took a good, hard, and very honest look at what was happening here and the returns from our parents and non-staff. Yeah, we're at about a 3, that's good. Well, good is not good enough for us. So what we did was lay out a plan to really put this spit polish on things. First couple of years that Eric and I have been here, we were looking at big rocks, urgent issues, and this past year, we've really been focusing on that granular detail and making sure that our sites are protecting, preserve the facilities and structures for the long term, ensuring the health and safety of our community and students, staff, stakeholders, and also to sustain efficient action steps to safeguard our investments in TCU as we all live and work and pay our taxes here. With that, we looked at the priorities that the community put forth and some of the percentage weightings that really resonated with those things that we could accomplish using the various funding mechanisms that I mentioned. Indoor air quality is a very, very close link to that fuzz and carpeting that I described earlier. Each year, as we turn up either the air conditioning or heating units, we move a lot of stuff around. Mr. Schroder was able to source a new type of filter, which has a tacky, open-cell foam type of, an architecture that captures a lot of that stuff, so we're literally carrying that out of the building. The main thing, though, is when we first remediate that dust, is that we don't just put it up into the air and have it land somewhere else needing to be cleaned again. So the goal there was to capture and remove all of that, get it out of the building entirely, so that our HVAC systems aren't clogged as quickly, they run more efficiently, and our air quality and dust control overall is improved. Our second-large deferred maintenance project is something that we thought we were ready to go to do 18 months ago, but as I went from site to site and using also Eric's experience, I really didn't feel that the proposals that we had had in hand that were inherited when we took the position were really detailed enough. So we had the contractors come back, look with greater detail, and come with proposals that were comprehensive. When we do a fix and we spend a public dollar, you know, Eric and I have agreed on, it's a 15-20-year fix when we make that investment. We don't want to be coming back in three years, five years, 10 years to do this. As such, the detail was really required. Here you're seeing some before-and-after shots of what is called tuck pointing. What is tuck pointing? Basically, that's stuff that holds these blocks together, the mortar, falls, fails, dries, crumbles, and basically deteriorates over time. That also blocks interior intrusion for insulation, cold air, critters, and water intrusion. So if you look at this corner here, and this chunk from a different angle of how many missing teeth that corner's got, this is what it looks like when the general were finished. Absolutely remarkable, and most of the stresses you're going to find are at those corner points and places where you bang things or where they're exposed to the elements on two surfaces. So just take the time to review that yourself. I really don't want to read these things because it's fairly, fairly short stuff.
For the sake of our audience who don't know all of our sites, which site is this an example of?
Yeah, so we had three site locations that we addressed, and oddly enough, they're the older site locations that we have with exterior block needing tuck pointing and ceiling. In addition to dealing with the block, Dr. Preisler, they also seal the caulking around the windows, take care of any of those penetrations in the building to make sure that there's no way that things can get, critters can get in the buildings and things of that sort. This is an example from the La Center primary site. We also had significant work that you'll see here shortly on the La Center auditorium, and also the 54 addition, which is the shop addition, where we were having a lot of water intrusion and block failure there. And then also, we needed to reseal and And then also, we needed to reseal and caulk around those windows on that west side of the auditorium where we have classrooms, two floors of classrooms. The last location was around the Montgomery K8 shop.
Yep.
And then also, interestingly enough, their 54 wing, where we had some issues with some lentils and block. So again, life cycles failing at a similar rate, they use the same, what we call means, modes, and methods of construction, given it was a similar timeline. Those were the three primary sites.
Thanks.
Yeah. This is the front of the La Center auditorium. This was constructed in 1936, pre-work. So notice, you've got all kinds of lichens and mossy things growing here. Down here on the limestone likes to provide that bed for mosses and things to adhere. You'll see particularly when you have a transition from large block to small block, that's where things like to shift because the heat expands those different sized blocks at different rates, and over time, that stuff just loosens itself. Here's what we look like today. Absolutely remarkable what these people did. And the crews did a fantastic job for us. Another area on the same structure that was needing this, this is like a type of plaster. We've got lathing and screening behind there that the here is a certain type of sand and plaster material that they use. You know, some of it is also ephist, another type of a material that's used in construction. But note down here particularly, where we had a lot of deterioration, of course, because that's where the water settles. It's also on the south side of the building where you have the tendency for that to not dry out and get a lot of sun at certain times of the year. They also addressed, again, the caulking and anything that needed to be done to seal up that structure along the window panes and areas where doorways meet and things of that sort. Here's what this structure looks like completed. Again, a long-term, 30-year solution in this instance. Watertight and secure, very bright and looking good. The other areas that we addressed was our large commons and gymnasiums, as I said. This is where they had done their first remediation of dust, cleaning the walls. They did a dry vac of all of the wall surfaces and areas on top here where dust accumulate. Before, they did a wet wash and prepped the walls for paint. This is our TCU La Center location. Up here, notice these stains. I tried to highlight them. It's a little dim with this projector, but those are areas where water is coming in through the block from the outside. Right at this line here, you can kind of see that line, we have roof areas on the outside that go to the adjacent structure in Area B. That's where the water comes down, doesn't weep away, but goes into the block. And what happens is it pushes that paint away in something called efflorescence. We get powders and disintegration of that block, and then the paint just fails and falls off. All of this was chipped, stripped, sealed, and then painted. Again, this is at the Montgomery K8 Elementary Gym in Area A. Same types of efflorescence and failure of the paint right down to the block layers. We can see the grace under blocks. This is what they look like finished. Bright, welcoming, durable surfaces, easy for us to clean and maintain for many years. This is the K8 gymnasium. Now, I wanted to point out this area in green, those are actually acoustic slats. They're literally gaps in the grout lines, and they're done to absorb and diffuse sound. It helps a little bit in gymnasiums, but they still end up sounding like an airplane hangar, you know, just a big empty droning space. For what they're worth, they were used at this particular time when construction was done to help control sound and overwhelming noise. What I know of them from personal experience, do you guys remember the second screen we had in our meeting room in the commons here? We had that two screens. Well, I mounted that into some of those block holes and had a number of eight-legged friends join me in the process. After seeing that, I said, you know, we really need to get these shop vaced. And they shop vaced every one of those cracks, getting the bugs, critters, ants, whatever it is that's accumulated all the years that these buildings have been here prior to doing their wet washing and cleaning. So we know that they did good work. And post-hence, this is what we're looking like today. Again, these surfaces are epoxy, commercial-grade paint, so we can get in there and do our now interim cleaning and maintenance for the long term using the equipment and materials that we have on hand for our internal teams. Here, we have a continuous durable floor surface, epoxy-based floor, where we are actually piloting this for the first year to see how we can use this in our larger areas where we have shifting concrete pads and no way of really controlling the openings and closings of the tiles and floors as we go forward. This is the renovation of kitchen area in the K8. Eric, when was that kitchen? You were going to school here.
I was. When I graduated in 1993, I think then it was 15 years old, what was down there. So we were using basically equipment from the late 70s, early 80s down in the kitchen. And it was really showing its wear with just the inefficiency and then the inability to get parts and stuff like that when it was broken down, which was very frequently.
On that one, Carl, this is Fund II. What does that mean? Yeah, Fund II is a satisfied fund specifically for food service. And Dr. Preisler, if you can kind of delineate what exactly that is. We partnered in the process and facilitating this with the kitchen program, in addition to the air makeup and also the vent fan, the hood fan replacement this summer, running concurrently on those projects. So the dollars for the improvements here specifically serve the food service, and that's basically the funding source that was here.
So any of our funding, that's a great question as well. Any of our funding that goes for, say, staffing, instruction, those things, that's all Fund I. Fund II is strictly food service. And then, of course, we have Fund IV, which is community education, and then Fund VI, which is with deferred maintenance and everything, or beyond this deferred, deferred debt, right? I got that one right, Jean?
Yeah.
Thank you. But you cannot cross, you can't use Fund II dollars for Fund I.
Separate.
Yep, yep. And you always want those to function independently. And we were at a point where we were able to make some investments that were seriously needed for the health and safety and food preparation for our children and staff, and it was time to get it done.
These types of fixes are a 30-year fix. You know, it's a long-term investment and a very durable, well-researched and well-thought plan with the kitchen crew, Eric and myself. I have to thank Eric for bringing to bear some of his professional contacts from when he was working in healthcare and really gave us some good solutions and good thought on how to best attack this room. Our throughput of dishes in there is much faster, and more importantly, we have safe and clean equipment to use for servers. Another large area, very large space to attack, this is a particularly difficult environment because you've got chlorine and constant high humidity. And it was really important that we had that durable, long-lasting, commercially-applied epoxy finish here, in addition to making sure that our competition space for the new Titan Swim team was ready to accept them and competitors as they move forward. The other thing that the commercial painting really helped with here was making sure that we had visible and safe areas around the pool, under the balcony areas. You can see here, it's fairly, fairly dark. This definitely helped us with the security and safety around that pool as well. And here is what our new paint is looking like.
That looks so nice.
Again, it's going to be very easy for our team to use adstock in those paints to make sure that we can maintain that and keep it lasting for the long term. One of the other large projects that we have is the regular life cycle replacement. Eric and I have a couple of planning documents that we use, one of which we just tombstoned, I call that closing, for the first three years. We go by a three-year planning process, and we opened up our new planning document for prioritization. We also have a collection document that we keep, and we update as we do our walkthroughs with our site administrators at each site at the beginning of the planning process for the year. And then we use that to contribute to our working document as to what the timeline is, how can that align with the budget, what are our priorities, and how does that align then with other projects so that we maximize the opportunities when contractors and contracts come up. In this case, these rooftop units above the K8 gymnasium were in serious need of repair and also leaking horribly. As such, we took the opportunity to solve both of those issues. The units that are on here also are heat and cool. They have a DX device in there as well. Maybe Eric, you can speak to how those work and why we chose those particular types of components.
It was nice. Instead of having the chilled water system or a chilled boiler system, it would have been considerable cost to pipe the water, to pipe the glycol up there. So this is just a, it's a simple rooftop heating and cooling unit. The gym was never air-conditioned from when it started out. Very stuffy. I mean, having baseball, spring baseball practice in the spring there, it's, and in the summer, it's just, it was just very oppressive to be in there. Where these two units will now efficiently heat it and cool it.
The other large benefit is also dehumidification. And any way we can keep that humidity within that, you know, comfort zone of 35 to 52% even in your sweatier times of the year, it helps all of your surfaces. You know, your floors don't become gummy and the walls become, you know, stay, stay clean and don't adhere the dust as much. So overall, the air circulation in these quieter units, much better air circulation. So our, again, our efficiencies and our operational costs over the long term, in addition to some very hefty rebates for these devices on top of that investment, will provide a very good service for us. Very small footprint. If you look at this device here, usually when these contracts were done in my, in my knowledge, limited knowledge of the time, you had to tear into the roof, you had to restructure the truss systems, you had to cut a bigger hole. What they've done now is they have what they call a curb adapter, which is basically just a plate that sits on where your old unit was, fits the new unit, and then we can just do minimal types of roof work around those devices, and we don't have any water intrusion.
So Eric and Carl, you know, exchanging or updating a rooftop unit certainly is at a different level than needing to totally replace an entire HVAC system, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So just wanting to make sure that we're clarifying that this is kind of like repairing a part of a system rather than needing to totally gut an entire system, which is then when we're looking at the 1.2 million types of dollars.
Yep.
That is correct. These are marginal and incremental investments that LTFM is designed for, long-term facilities maintenance. So we put these things, all of our systems, each of the RTUs, on a life cycle table. We know how old they are, when they're going to start needing a lot of money, and this is part of that regular process for which LTFM is designed.
I just want to clarify, a fix like this doesn't take care of our HVAC needs at TCU La Center?
Absolutely not.
Absolutely not.
Nope.
Absolutely not.
This would be one small, small little piece of that whole big puzzle.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
So I have a question. So you don't know the center needs to have the HVAC replaced, the whole system, and that's part of the proposed bond that's going on. So if that were to not pass, can you use the LTFM dollars for that? I mean, is there nothing there? Is it, what are the options there that doesn't?
The reason why we're making the bond request is for that very reason. We literally, in those regards, when we maintain systems like that of that age where we can't find parts, or contractors that have the experience with equipment that's old are throwing good money after bad. It is so hard to find a solution in that space because of the numbers of years where you have attached buildings and structures and mixed systems for a solution that is comprehensive. We can replace a rooftop unit at the center, but it's already been zoned. It's not expanding or including those classroom areas where we really need that air quality improved. And LTFM could not support a project of that scale. A roof project, the size of a gymnasium roof, similar to what you're looking at here, $425,000 to $450,000 is what we're asking for in the referendum request. LTFM cannot cover those types of things for one space when we have six, you know, six buildings to serve. So that really is the urgency of that referendum request. It's a good question. Another of the projects that we focused on this summer was taking care of some of our drainage issues and safety issues around our entries and new entries at the primary building here at the centers, which you're looking at, the middle school K8 at Montgomery, and then also the high school. What we were running into here at the center, if you look, I have a little call-out, they call it, of this red square, which is this corner that you're looking at up here. For years, the concrete pads have been settling and sinking, and what happens is it channels that water rather than away from the building into the sidewalk area underneath which is the entry for the first floor, running along the joists and directly into a classroom. So that water literally is funneling in this small little level ramp into the ceiling and into the classroom. So the remediation work here that you see here leveled up that concrete, replaced those pieces of concrete that we could no longer use. We used a technique called mud jacking to keep those pads that were still of value and did not have cracks in them, bring them up to a level so that we can run that water away from the building into this gravel and then out to the storm drain system.
The gravel is also tiled too, so we can get it all the way out to the storm drain a lot quicker.
Yep. And then you'll notice the slamper, or a slant, excuse me, slam. I could use a little sugar in the brain. Notice the run here away from the building, away from the entry, and towards the gravel and into that tile area to get that water away. In this area, we were running into, when we would have downpours, this would get wet. And what's happening is these pieces of concrete, the decorative concrete unfortunately, tend to sink away when the sand substrate layer is washed. So what's happening is we get a collection of water in this area here, it goes under the concrete, washing away the sand and causing those, those concrete pads to drop. We had that all along the front area of the high school here, and we also diverted some rain during heavier downfalls and rains. We have a roof drain scupper here that just dumps like a fire hose for as long as that rooftop is being evacuated of the water on that surface, again, causing flooding. What was happening in the high school area to the, to the east of this, this work was our curb, our sidewalk, and the vituminous, meaning the asphalt, of our driveway is literally sinking in. In the wintertime, that's a main entry where our buses are coming and going, and also where our cars from the staff lot and the student lot and the, and the front area visitors' lot come together. And we were getting ice pads right in that area in the intersection where people are coming and going. So our first concern here was to remediate those issues, also avoiding staff when they're going to their vehicles slipping and falling during those times of the year when we can't get to the ice in time or when it's after hours, and the removals have been done by our contractor.
So now they're clarifying for community members who don't know our sites, this area of the drainage that was running into along the building there at our TCU La Center primary, what classrooms was that running down into? What classrooms we have at our first level? It's pretty much all of our preschool.
Fortunately, since it was a known issue, at this point in time, it was cold storage. So we weren't, there wasn't classrooms occupied where we had water intrusion. That's where we keep many things.
But now that can be used for our additional preschools, we look.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
So now, we can go ahead and have that internal surface properly sealed, properly painted, and we can use that classroom for kids to be in there. One of the things that you'll notice here at the high school is this chunk of dirt, this is a Google Maps snapshot of a piece of ground that really is hard to maintain. We can't grow anything here. During the winter months, we move our sand piles there. It's full of salt. Trying to recover it and get it to go in the spring just didn't make sense. Also, we had a pretty significant need for additional staff parking and also parking to feed the stadium area here. So what we did was turn this chunk up So what we did was turn this chunk of basically useless ground and grass into a nice parking area for staff and stadium access. In addition to that, at our Lonsdale location and our high school location, we underwent a pretty significant LED, that's light emitting diode fixture replacement. They're eighty-three percent efficient. Again, as I mentioned earlier, we hope to have these for thirty, forty years. That's the intention. Operational savings payback on these is very significant. But also, notice when you go out to your vehicles this evening, we don't have the oddball bulb that we had die, you know, of course, right during daylight savings time. It's bright, it's even, and it's safe. Our maker spaces, some of the dollars that we chose to invest for capital this past summer, we're really focused on those areas of learning that we have a lot of energy behind, both in our instructional staff and our admin teams, for STEM, Project Lead the Way, robotics, and active hands-on learning labs. What we're doing actually is working in collaborative and student-driven learning environments within these labs whereby they create the content, they create the experience under mentorship guidance, and then also direct instruction when necessary and when appropriate by our educators. And on this side of the screen, you're seeing the lab that came to fruition at the La Center Science Room. Each station having a collaborative working screen for our student learners. And on this side, we have that lab that I had mentioned was a tactical fix to provide more classroom space, also running concurrently with the need to have fixed PC labs as we migrate over a three-year term to our one-to-one initiative, but also to showcase the amazing work that these kids are doing in this area, robotics and PLTW. The space is humming all day long with productive work, and it's just, just wonderful to see what these kids are producing. We repurposed some PC lab furniture into a maker space and multi-use PC lab and mobile lab environment at our La Center site this summer as well. This was a great project and a wonderful partnership with the Minnesota Valley Action Council, the city of La Center, and then also our TCU teams. MBAC saw the need that we did not have, as that site has transitioned, age and size-appropriate play systems for those kiddos from ages one to four and five years old. You know, the equipment we had were those kiddos that were aged five to eight, ten years old. As such, the city of La Center saw a need to maybe put some of that equipment in other areas of the community. So they did the demolition and de-stall of that equipment safely and moved that to an area of their choice. MBAC contracted and also won the grant and donated this play system to La Center as you see it. And the TCU teams did the ground works and leveling and dirt moving out and hauling and remediation, the old gravel redistribution and things of that sort. A real nice project that served that site very well. Lastly, I'd like to touch on, you know, the areas of funding. And if you look on the left-hand side, this is the LTFM dollars that we committed to the significant upgrades and needed deferred maintenance projects that we did this summer. And you can see by category here how we basically grouped those funds. And again, that comes from our data collection sheet and our prioritization and timeline sheet as to what projects are going to fit into that particular category area for the year. We are busily now getting our arms around those projects that are in next priority for next year and starting that process already. As you see, for LTFM, since it's facilities maintenance, what we try to do is retain a contingency. So if we have a boiler failure, if we have a pipe burst, if we have any of those issues that are, are really critical in those heating months in Minnesota, we're able to have those funds to respond to them. And LTFM is a budget that we can carry from year to year if we so choose. So if this accumulates, we then have those dollars then to reinvest in those projects as we plan for the long term and deferred maintenance things that we're considering.
A good example of the contingency is last February, we lost a valve on one of our boilers that shut down a wing of the La Center School, the A wing, the kindergarten, first grade and second. And it was, when we came that morning, it was fifty-five degrees in there. So we were able to band-aid it and get the heat there, but the, the replacement of the, of the old, old valve was, you know, quite expensive. And, you know, we were able to do that without going over budget and also getting it done quickly.
I smile because I see Mrs. Traxler grinning as she obviously remembers that those days or weeks when we were needing to wear the winter coat while we taught and everything. Yeah, it was, yes, yes.
I remember even her disappearance. And I just, okay.
Bundle up. We're, yeah.
So Eric and I, you know, that was contingency that we had carried over from last year that we had then available to respond to an urgent, urgent week that otherwise would have been very difficult.
Was it because the boiler was so old that it didn't have, they weren't able to get the parts?
Yes, they had to remake the whole, the whole valve, start from scratch.
So it means that the kids had to sit in, not?
Yeah. It was, we got it the best we could just by manually opening and closing it every, I think every hour, Deuter Lance went down there and they manually opened the valve and then closed it because if you opened it too much, then the classrooms are a hundred and fifty degrees. So it was either, you know, feast or famine. It was freezer, freezer, freezer heat. So it was, yeah.
So what we typically do is we load the building, right?
Yeah.
And then you carry that over. Loading the building is warming the walls, warming the furnishings, the ceiling. And then when you get bodies in there, it helps a little bit, but it is good that we have a mechanism here so that we can respond quickly. And not everything becomes an emergency or a budget crusher. Yeah. On the right-hand side, what you're seeing is our operating supplies, repairs, and services, capital. That vehicle is used for when we do our regular maintenance. So Eric gets his supply list from our custodial teams. And typically, the burn rate on that happens early in the season. We pretty much know what that is. As we have other types of site-based, simple repairs and those types of things, we'll be using that as a funding vehicle. So with that, we really had a lot of fun seeing the significant changes and also addressing specifically what the community was asking us to do in that survey. And made some great strides in what we need to do for maintaining and preserving our investments here. So with that, do you guys have any questions for Eric or I?
Oh, yeah. Can you share with us the board, the idea of bringing in the company and what actually the cost savings that was to our school district, having some of that type coming in, cleaning it, becoming lack of equipment that we have. And if we had that, what did it cost and so it's contributing, which you should have as the other thing. So you'll spend a couple minutes on that, I think.
Yeah. So I mentioned my experience up in the ceiling, right? And that was a single-unit man lift, okay? And there's no way to move that lift without going down, lifting out the outriggers, moving it the two feet that you need, and then getting in it. So, you know, there's no solution to do spaces that large using that type of a lift. The other option back in the day was to have dudes set up the scaffolding. Again, a single space as far as you can reach in a four-by-eight area up thirty-six feet in the air was not a way to solve this. Fortunately, since that time, we've had the development of those scissor lifts, drivable lifts, and two- and three-person lifts that allow a person to get up with their equipment, a couple of guys, you know, or workers in the, in the device and actually move and be productive in that all the time. Those are expensive. And it's not a device that TCU could really afford to invest in because of the safety and maintenance concerns, the harnesses, the training, and, you know, the specific use of that. So it's best to contract those things. Now Dale, to your point, a solution like this, ten or fifteen years. You know, I expect that to last for a long time because we don't have a lot of that initial accumulation of dust and debris and detritus and things of that sort because we've remediated it. Now that we have healthy air handling systems, we're capturing that stuff in real time and getting it out of the building. So.
And what we can do, we do. We paint classrooms, stuff where we keep us off of ladders, you know, paint hallways, stuff like that where you have a big gym and the type of paint that we're using, it's extremely difficult to paint it to make it look good. I know I don't have the skills to do it, or the patience to do what, what, what they did. It would have, and again, we're talking about a three-foot, you know, in a man lift, and I'm not a small person, you know, to move around, he might, even range of motion was a lot less than most normal people. So we do what we can, but to bring professionals to do the stuff that we know we can't do.
Yeah.
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. That what I liked about your presentation was one, you're always very thoughtful in your planning, and so I appreciate all the detail that you give us.
Thank you.
There's this small amount of detail that you gave us tells me there's lots of things that happen behind the scenes. I mean, clearly you two are very thoughtful with it, not only for the present, but for our future too, which I think is great. I, this might sound corny, but as you were talking through the, I think about the district goals that you just even went through and how you guys have stayed true to that, which I think is cool. So we're lucky to have you guys to do this for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? All right. Well, it certainly appears that you, we appreciate the before and after, that you were taking a look at our structures and what we could afford to take care of on an ongoing types of basis. And certainly what we saw here on those pictures were just one year's worth to know that those kinds of needs continue on and on. And so, you know, sometimes there's the question, well, just use the dollars you have to do the fixes, but with the, the large amount of roof area that's needing replacement, and that is not the only roof even at that site that is needing a replacement, but it is a, a large enough amount to be able to help us get over that hump, the levels of the amounts of the HVAC system needing total replacement, those types of things. And none of these dollars can be used for adding new space. These are, these are not dollars that can be used to add a classroom. So that thus brings the, the facility needs that are core to the bond referendum and these things just to keep us so we don't fall behind and have us getting thirty-plus years old and, and being back in that hole, so to speak, again, or having some of the structural wall deteriorations that, that we just keep needing to replace. It's time to get them, or fix, I should say. It's time to get replaced and do it right so that we're set for the long term. Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Next, we have early learning in TCU.
Whoops, someone's taken over. I'm going to let them drive. Here we go.
Dr. Preisler, members of the school board, thanks for this opportunity tonight to present an overview of our early learning or early childhood family ed programs. Some of you know the woman to my left, some of you don't, but this is Natalie Exteine. She is the still relatively new early learning, early childhood family ed program coordinator. And I do want to say that Natalie has done an outstanding job. She started just a bit before school started, and there were some people that we, that positions were offered to and they accepted, and then they moved on to other positions. We had a maternity leave, and my point is, is that Natalie has done a great job problem-solving, kind of patching things and issues that needed to be taken care of. And a lot of this has to do with some of our most precious people in our school district, our three, four, or five-year-olds. So Natalie has done a great job. What we're going to do tonight, though, is we're going to provide a, an overview of early learning opportunities in the school district. We'll talk a little bit in general terms, then we'll talk a little bit about each of our buildings. Then we'll talk briefly about some things that we feel we do really, really well and some things that we feel are challenges or provide opportunities. We will have time at the end for questions, but please feel free to interject and ask a question if you have some kind of a burning issue that you want talked about or addressed right now. Please just feel free to speak up. Natalie?
All right. So on this first slide is just kind of our mission statement for early learning. And then on the next slide is just some definitions for you guys in case you're not up on the language of early childhood. But ECFE stands for Early Childhood Family Education. And really, it's a program where families can come and get assistance and meet other families in their same walk of life with young people. It's for children birth to age five and their families. School readiness is a preschool run-through school districts. We are parent-aware, four-star rated program, which is the highest you can get, so that's exciting. Early childhood screening is something that we do six times throughout the year, so twice at each of our sites. And what it really is meant to do is just catch those students that are entering kindergarten in the next year or two and try to get them some extra support and extra service before they get there. So it's an opportunity for families to get a snapshot of their child's development. And if there's any delays, that we can kind of help them get through in the next year or two before they get to kindergarten. So it's really just to help equip families with getting their kids on track and ready for kindergarten. Some other terms you might have heard of, we are part of Pathway One and Pathway Two in our district. They are scholarship funding. Pathway One goes directly to families, so it follows the child. If they leave the district, Pathway Two stays within our district and we get to award students that come to our program, so that stays with us. And we did apply for voluntary pre-K last year. We were not accepted for that, but that's another term that's kind of out there right now. I think that's all I have for terms. Do you guys have any that you've heard of that I'm wondering about? Okay.
And one of the things that's kind of important to know about early learning and early childhood family ed in the state of Minnesota is it's a legis, from a legislative standpoint, it's a really, really hot topic, in, in a good way, but it's a really hot topic. So we'll just talk, I want to mention briefly, these are some district totals. And then the last number fifty-two, we actually have twelve more students that we're screening, which would make it sixty-four. We have a screening event this Friday in La Center.
So we just kind of have the breakdown of each site, the programs that we offer at this point. So in La Center Primary, we have two sections of four-day pre-K and two sections of three-day pre-K. The four-day is full, the three-day is close to being full, both, both sections. We have three ECFE classes. Most of that is due to just staffing in that location. We also have Head Start that houses in our La Center Primary building.
The hours for those programs are?
They're two and a half hours each section. So we have morning and an afternoon for both. And then Lonsdale, we have three sections of two-day pre-K and two sections of three-day pre-K. And the three-day, again, is full, much more full than the two-day. But we do offer six ECFE classes there. Part of that is need enrollment. We have a lot of families that attend in Lonsdale. We also have an additional classroom that we can use during the same time that pre-K's going on in Lonsdale.
In one?
Oh, sorry, go ahead. When you say full, does that mean like the classrooms are full or do we need more space or is it just?
Uh, well, ratio-wise, it's full, but definitely we've had some students that we couldn't get them into the section that they wanted just because of space reasons. We're over capacity on some of those.
What is that ratio?
The ratio is, well, it kind of depends with early childhood special ed students. All of our classes are inclusive, but gen ed is one in ten.
I'm also noticing that each of these sites, and I know you haven't gotten to Montgomery yet, but I know from experience that in Montgomery, they do not have a four-day pre-K program and it's a two and a three day. So do you, and you said the four-day was full. I missed. and it's a two and a three day. So, do you, and you said the four days, well, I'm assuming that the response from parents is, is good, they like it. How could we get that to these other sites, to be kind of standard across the board, so three and four, if it's a high demand thing, and it's better to have those kiddos at school sooner, if they're ready to be?
Yep. Part of our goals that we'll get to later, but space is an issue, especially in Montgomery. We just don't have space to do a four-day. And also, with having more options of pre-K, we're reaching more kids right now. If we do a four-day, we wouldn't be able, we'd have half as many kids, if that makes sense.
Because of space.
Because of space, but yes, because we have like a Tuesday, Thursday morning, and a Wednesday, Friday morning, so that's twice as many kids as a Tuesday through Friday. So that's another thing to look at as well. But definitely, space is an issue. And then staffing as well. Our staff is stretched pretty thin. Many of our early childhood staff are across all three sites, so. So, Montgomery, yeah, we don't have any four-day in the other two sites. We have one section of three-day pre-K and three sections of two-day. And there, we have three ECFE classes as well. And again, that is partially space-wise. I think we could offer more ECFE classes. We just don't have space to have them at the same time as pre-K is going on.
Do you have ECFE classes that happen like during the day, like the six classes that are in, or six classes that are in Lonsdale, so there's some that are during the day for families that stay home?
Yep. So all of our sites have some day and some evening, so we kind of do a mix of both.
And you referenced the voluntary pre-K, and our program is only two and a half hours a session, but in voluntary pre-K, the sessions would be longer by state statute, correct?
Yep.
And that's what's able to be offered in, in many of our neighboring districts with, with combination of the longer preschool, but also the wraparound that gives that, that kind of daycare kinds of supports as well.
Yep. It's a different contract for the teachers too, for the voluntary pre-K.
What would it take to get the volunteer?
To be honest, I'm not super familiar with, with all of the application through before it was here, so. But that is part of it, would be an all-day program, and then staff it, do the wraparound program, which would be the before and after.
Maybe more space.
Or staff.
Just it would have to grow.
Yep, yep.
So some of the things that we feel here in TCU, in our early learning and early childhood programs, is we feel that we have excellent staff. All of our early childhood parent ed and school readiness teachers, they all hold Minnesota licenses, in either early childhood family education, elementary education, or parent education. Another, another one of the things that we feel that is a really, a good part of our program, is, is that we offer programming in all three of our communities. And there are some neighboring communities that are maybe somewhat the same size. They have one central location. And even though that's a particular type of a model, we feel that the model that we're utilizing spaces in our three communities is really important.
And then some needs, kind of as we talked about, is just space for programming. We could really expand if we had the space, just offer more classes, new opportunities, things we haven't offered before, which again, what, you know, we'd need more staff to cover those. Right now, like Mark said, everybody's licensed, that's fantastic, and that's great. Not every district has license. Our pre-K teachers are licensed with the Minnesota license. They don't have to be to teach pre-K, so we're kind of unique that way. We are out of sibling care space. They are very small classrooms that are also used for storage. In our Lonsdale location, preschool is going on at the same time that we're using sibling care, so they're walking, families are walking through preschool to get to the sibling care room while pre-K is going on.
Natalie, what's sibling care?
Sibling care is, so if a family attends one of our ECFE classes, it's where the siblings go for the duration of the class, so that family member can really focus on the one child that's there at the time. And then screening setup, each site is unique, but since we are in the elementary buildings, we are doing early childhood screenings while all of the students are in their normal day-to-day, so that can be challenging. We do vision and hearing and developmental, and sometimes the distractions just of being in a normal, heavily populated hallway is, is a challenge. Montgomery is probably our biggest challenge there as well. Oh, one more thing. Just with the staff, we are low on parent education this year, so that's kind of unique. We've had to change some of our classes to how they're offered compared to in the past. So, that's definitely something we need, and that's a Minnesota state shortage, so unfortunately, we are feeling that as well. But that's something we need immediately if we could.
I will say one thing, all my children have gone to ECFE, and I get that there's a shortage, but you guys, and the teachers have done a good job. As a parent, I don't feel that, coming to the classroom, getting the stuff. So, whatever you guys are giving behind the scenes to beef that up. Like I said, I have four kids that have, one's currently in it. I haven't felt, and my kids in there haven't, haven't heard. So, I would say close to two, three, four.
So some goals for our early learners and early childhood in general in the TCU schools, we're really interested in expanding programming, both in ECFE classes and pre-K options for families, and to also streamline programming across sites. We're really interested in expanding the program, but we have limitations largely by facilities.
There are transportation needs. We have some students that just can't get here due to transportation, or we offer in some of our sites to come to school, but then on the other end, when they leave their pre-K, we don't have busing to go along with that. So there is definitely some transportation needs. I feel that there's definitely families we're not reaching at all, that maybe transportation is their only setback. Again, just hiring and maintaining staff is just a goal. We have really great staff, and we just need to keep them, because they are fantastic. And then, just for the future, we're kind of looking and thinking about just educating community members in general, just on the importance of early childhood. There's kind of a shift where there's a little bit lower of enrollment. We did have that, you know, we have dedicated families that have been here for four or five kids that are now graduating into kindergarten, and so we're losing some that we've had a long time. So just kind of educating the community on just the importance, and maybe re-educating on how important it is to get kind of a new wave of families to come in, so.
And in the community surveys that were done last late winter, there's a lot of community members that are still continuing to be not aware of what early learning, early childhood, family ed programs do. And so that's one of the things that, you know, we're really aware of. A lot of the articles that have been appearing in the local papers are early childhood focused, so that people in our communities know the importance of early learning and early childhood family ed.
It is certainly an investment for the long term.
Yes.
Not just getting ready for kindergarten. It's an investment for, for our children's futures. There's tremendous research on the increase of literacy skills and exposure to vocabulary, and just the language skills. And I don't mean language as in learning a language. I'm talking language as in having a, a strong ability of speaking and leading into reading, and all of those areas that, that early learning opportunities provide. And we are barely at fifty percent across the district of our incoming kindergarteners each year who are experiencing early learning. And there isn't a great amount of other opportunities besides what we offer at school. There are some, and they do a great job. But for, for many of our families, that's a barrier either of the times of it, that it's not a full-day type of thing, and that the transportation comes into it, even though we offer and charge for it, that is a barrier. And being able to be kind of that one-stop shop for it, is what we hear frequently from families, wanting it to match up with their work schedules.
And that one-stop shop issue is one that we're also really very interested in as well, but we're restricted by our space.
Do you keep track of, or is there data out there for those kids who are attending the, the early childhood prior to going into kindergarten, in regards to those kids who are not? Is there showing a great difference of their learning skills? Is there data that proves that?
There is some research, and there is alignment of early childhood all the way up through third grade, just with literacy, and just how important it is to start from babies all the way up to third. So there is kind of this push and research to show that when we start little up through third, just the improvement that is shown, then when it comes to the standards in third grade.
Any other questions?
All right. Certainly appreciate the work that you've done, Natalie. You've stepped in, and, and you didn't get a chance to walk, you had to run, and you've done a really good job with it. And it's been exciting to see your energy behind the work that you're doing too. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, next, we have our bond website overview.
I think Tiffany's gonna run that one.
Okay, so, just need to get it up here. Now, as we create this website, it's mostly so that our community members have a resource where, where they can find the, the facts of everything with this, this bond. So, if they were to hear things, or, or have questions and things like that, they could come here, have the facts, get everything that they need. The goal for this website was to make it clear, simple, easy to use. We think about all the different kinds of people in the community, all their different skills with technology, and all the devices that they're gonna be using to access this. So to create a website that's good for everything was, we definitely put lots of thought into that. There's lots of jargon and things, and this can be confusing at times. So we did our best to make, to make things simple for, and easy for people to understand. So, you would get to this website from our homepage. We would have, you know, our referendum button, easy and clear to use. We have it pretty much ready to go. We just have to go live. So this is kind of, when you would, were to click on it from our homepage, it would go here. As you've seen, we've had our logo here, and on this homepage, it breaks into each of the questions, and what is going to be, how much they cost, and what's included in that. I mean, I don't know.
I think it's, I think it's mainly, the purpose for this is mainly so that it's kind of an introduction to it, so that you know what's there, how it navigates, and can help to communicate with our constituents where they can find more information.
Yeah, so this, we try to just make a simple overview of, of the bond, and what, what a little bit of history. Here we have, like here we have links. We don't want to, you know, give too much information, but then, like here, we have like a more detailed history if they wanted it. So, we have some things there. So on this front page here, you can find some of the informational nights, and that's not the only place we have it. And then, at the bottom of every page, these buttons down here also link up here. We just try to think about how people use it, like maybe they missed something up the top, or if there's more, they like to scroll to the bottom. And as you look at it, just, just keep in mind that it is a webpage, you know. When you, when you view it, some people are gonna view it in full screen on a big computer. Some people will be on a phone when you expand and contract. So you can't really have exactly the way you would like it every time. At the bottom, we have our contact, and these links here work. This would bring us to the Tri-City United Facebook page, or Twitter, an email, and then the YouTube page that we have with some of our videos. And then on every page at the bottom, there's our ETCU updates, the newsletter, which, on a side note, we're hoping to have the first one come out Wednesday. We're gonna have those updates twice a month. We figure we'll do them on the Wednesdays following a board meeting or workshop, so that we could do board updates. And then also some other information we have, and that list is growing, of people who have signed up, getting a couple people every, every few days. So, so there's just the general overview. Then, the second tab you can go to is the facts. And here are needs and solutions. So, you'll notice the three buttons at the top. Right now, this brochures button will take you to our just-the-facts sheet. This was sent out not only in the district newsletter, but it will be in our community ed catalog. And we will have a more detailed brochure with, with images of this sort to come. And we'll be creating videos. This will take you just to some of the school videos we've made. And then, our presentation here, right now, this is gonna link to our informational nights, but we're gonna be including the presentation that you'll, you'll see at those informational nights. So we also try to keep information so that people know that when they click that, that they can come back and there'll be something different, like with, with the coming soon, because if we put something there, then they would maybe not look back there. So if we say coming soon, then they know there will be information in the future. So on this facts sheet, we broke it down by school. So, high school, on the left side, we have our needs, and then on the right side, we have our solutions on how we would address those needs. So we start with the high school, then we just go alphabetically to Lonsdale, Lee Center, and Montgomery. So, that's where you would find some of that information. Then we have our tax impact tab. So this is the chart that you'll find in those handouts, and this is the simplified chart, so you'll see the residential of one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. Well, of course, the website is the resource where if someone didn't, wanted to find other numbers, they could go here. So over to the side here, we still need the, the tax calculator is pretty close. It's not, this is not live. This will be one of our coming soon. But for more detailed tax charts, as you see here, are all different values of homes. Here, we've worked on trying to keep these easy to read. And then up, so here you'll see the Montgomery-Lonsdale, this one's labeled. And then this one would be the former La Center, and the other ones are the former Montgomery-Lonsdale.
Just one piece I want to add in, because you're doing a great job there, Tiffany. The impact of these, of the question one, question two in this bond is the same, no matter if you were previous La Center or previous Montgomery-Lonsdale. So when you look at column one and column two for previous La Center, and you look at column one, column two for previous Montgomery-Lonsdale, those numbers are the same. The differential comes from the net impact caused by the forty percent ag to school tax credit. And that's where it becomes different. And so you can see within the ag land, there, the ag to school tax credit causes the net differential to be different for the two previous school districts, because previous Montgomery-Lonsdale is carrying past bond debt, which was in the agreement that the districts would take care of their past debt, but they would share the, the bond on the high school, because students from all three communities come to the high school. So that is why we still show tax impacts for the previous two districts.
And then, of course, the tax calculator will be very helpful as well, because you can use that to just type in your own personal information, and will, and will give you some pretty close numbers to what you're looking for. So, another big question, or, you know, what reason why people will come here to our website is to figure out some voting information. So, right up top, we have three buttons here, and this is a really good resource for early and absentee voting. So, once again, really, now in Minnesota, you don't need a reason to vote early. So, here, we've tried to keep it very simple on showing all the different ways that you can vote early, or do an absentee ballot. Now, whether you come in person to the district office, or you mail it in, the links and everything are there, so that's where you can find that information. You can also, if you're more of, if you miss that button when you scroll down, we have some, we have that button, when you scroll down, we have some, we have that information written out here. Then registering to vote, this will take you to the website where you can register online and all the information there to register to vote. And then right now, here's our sample ballot. This is a working document. We are working on having one that has some notes and stuff that we can kind of help them through and pick apart some of these. We've seen some examples of what some other schools have done to make it even easier. So, but for now, we just have, that is available for people to see the breakdown of how, the wording of question one and question two. And although I wasn't here for the previous bond, I know that this is worded a lot differently and clearly and has more specific. So hopefully everyone is, knows that. So there's our election date and the times. Then here we have the polling locations. And then who's included in those over here. And then a map. So we have the Senator's City Hall, Lonsdale, and Montgomery. And then like, as I indicated before, there's the information for early absentee. It's both down here and up at the top. And then same with registering to vote. This is the same link that that button has. And then there's just some more voting information, talking about the townships, which is indicated here. Then that brings us to the last tabs is our questions tab. We have our frequently asked questions here. And then over here, they can just fill out that comment box if they want to contact us with any type of question. And then these expand. And hopefully, if they have any of these questions, we have a couple links for some of these frequently asked questions.
Tiffany, do, will we have a way to find out how many people have used this?
Uh, yeah. So the, we use Weebly for this and it'll show how many clicks and how often it's being used in this website statistics and things like that. If we take a look, I want to say, here, I want to, even just on the homepage here, you can see some stats like that too. So be able to kind of track some of that stuff.
What did you say, are those going live again?
Uh, we were, we're pretty much really close right now. I'd say this week, as long, we just kind of want to go through some last like spell checks, make sure all of our links are accurate. I just finished up our, we were working on the frequently asked questions, and then I just put it into the table today. And that was one of the last pieces. Of course, this will continue to grow as we get more information, maybe some videos, that presentation, things like that. Well, but very, I'd say this, this week and
Yep, definitely.
So you can check for that on our website. Anyone can access it. Especially December 29th is that date when early voting starts. And that's when you can start to register. So, so it's good to have people know that.
What great information.
I see, you know, we got it linked to like Twitter and Facebook and stuff like that. Is there any way, because I see like the high school, or the school district itself does it a lot with the bond information, and only Center, and Montgomery-KA, they're kind of always updating things. Is there any way that those schools would continue to do that so that way it does get more views? And is those people on social media?
Meaning like the, the schools' individual Facebook pages?
Right.
Um, we certainly can link this from theirs to it. We can only link one Facebook page from here out. So for example, each of our sites would def, you know, definitely have, check out our TCU bond referendum webpage, click, you know, go here. So that can definitely be a piece. But in order, when you saw those buttons at the bottom, for this to go out can only go to one.
So I'm just thinking, you know, yeah, if it comes up this week, how many people are actually going to know that? So I'm thinking if we can use the power of social media to push it at least for the person.
Yep, we can certainly, right, announce our addition, or our launch of it. And we can put it in our abouts on our Facebook so that, you know, if we start posting other things and it gets pushed to the bottom, it's at least on the about tab, can have links. There's things we can do for that. Any other questions or comments or concerns?
Great work.
I think Tiffany-
And they, we will have a domain name that's, it's going to be vote.tcu2905.us. So just, if you were to type that up at the URL, it's, that's going to be very simple. So that will go live when the website goes live.
I think you did a nice job making it really clean, easy. And certainly has, has all the facts there. That's a starting point.
So on that, so on the agenda where it said questions, you can type in your email address, ask your question with the name.
Yep.
Will that question automatically go in the box?
This, right now, I can link this email to anyone right now. It'll go to me, which I would obviously fast forward to Dr. Preisler, which maybe we could have just adjusted to go straight to your inbox. Let me see.
No, but will it go in the frequently asked questions box as a, or not?
You can probably add that as-
Yes. It doesn't automatically go there, but once we see it, we can add more to or take out some of these. We're starting here at a point of the questions that really came from the last bond, or some things that we've heard through initial work and everything. So as these questions come, we can keep adding. The problem is it could get pretty long. So we'll probably need to recycle.
As a multiple questions or same question?
Yep, yep. Another great question. Super.
Yeah. And if we have, if we find, yeah, like more questions or things getting lost, we can always make adjustments on, I think so.
It's a great start. Absolutely.
Thank you Tiffany. I know this has been a lot. We've spent a lot of time together. And the work you've done has been double, triple what from our meetings. So thank you.
Brenda's driving us back that way.
Thank you.
All right. Next we have our enrollment overview.
Alrighty. We, we have, we have always polled our enrollment data on the first of the month. One of the things that Ms. Rozier shared was that in the future, we may want to consider pulling it like right prior to board meetings because within that short period of time, it changes. And so what you're going to see here is a bit of a, you know, down to an 1863. But since this poll, we've had students move in. So we're really more at a flat even. So just kind of an interesting piece, but I said, we've kept it on the first, let's be consistent so we're not shifting things around. But as I always share, some comparative to this, interesting, this number is slightly higher than last year, this time. We saw a bit more of a dip around this time last year. Our families who work within seasonal career and positions have not necessarily made moves this year at this point, and maybe are not going to. So we're pretty excited about that as well. And as our comparative again, to when we started as TCU, at this time on November 1 of the poll, we were at 1752. And as you can see, we've held steady at here now at an 1863, again, slightly higher than where we were a year ago.
All right. American Education Week would be November 13th through the 17th, which is this week.
Yes, it is. You know, an important time to, to honor and celebrate public education throughout our nation. And we certainly, as you've heard all night long, we have outstanding staff who are serving our children on a daily basis. And behind the staff is a strong foundation of our beliefs within our mission and vision and beliefs as a district, and the leadership that occurs throughout our sites and departments, and just the teamwork that happens. And so really proud of the public education roles that we play here in this region, and certainly want to recognize that with our American Education Week proclamation. So, and normally our clerk does resolutions, but this is a proclamation. So let our chairman of the board.
The Tri-City United Public School District, American Education Week proclamation. Great public schools, a basic right in our responsibility. Whereas public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality. And whereas by equipping young Americans with both practical skills and broader intellectual abilities, schools give them hope for and access to a productive future. And whereas education employees, be they teachers, substitute educators, school office support staff, custodians, administrators, confidential employees, bus drivers, paraprofessionals, or nutrition staff, work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism. And whereas school encourage communities, schools encourage community bringing together adults and children, educators and volunteers, business leaders, and elected officials in a common enterprise. Now therefore, we do hereby proclaim November 13th through the 17th, 2017, as the 96th Annual Observance of American Education Week.
Good deal.
Yes. And we have the great opportunity to be honoring our staff with having a staff breakfast at each of our sites this week. Once again, our Tahhurt food service went above and beyond this morning with some pretty tasty sandwiches and all kinds of stuff. It was plateful. And we'll be at TCU High School tomorrow morning. And then on Thursday, TCU Montgomery at 7:15. And then head over to TCU Lonsdale at 8:15 that morning. So. We would never encourage that whatsoever.
It's doable.
We would ask at the conclusion of the meeting though, for each of our board members, we have the proclamation printed out. We will, we will ask- That would be fabulous.
Absolutely.
Can I do a quick, oh, but if I, I don't know who this is under, so I better not do a secure print because I don't know who has the-
Fabulous. Thank you so much, Mr. Peter.
All right. All right. So next we'll move on to our committee updates.
I did see that in my initial notes, I did not list the committees that had happened last month that will get on my to-do. So I have jotted those down for us. Our committees that met within the last month, our Southwest Metro Board Meeting, which is Dale, Q Comp Advisory, Michelle and Marcia, Finance, Michelle, Marcia, and Krista, and Facilities, Ashley, Dale, and Dan. It would appear Kevin was the only one who didn't get to have a committee meeting this morning. So, updates from each of those four committees, please.
Dale, go ahead.
Southwest Metro, October 13th, was the gala. And very, very well attended this year. We always have students come back and give their stories of how they're using this money. And the people who attended said, said they were some of the best stories that, and probably raised the most money that they've had in recent years. One of the people gave somewhat, puts up for auction. His timeshare in the past has gone for four, five hundred dollars at the most, and this year went for a hundred bucks. The other thing that I think is noteworthy, and maybe you, some of you saw it, Beth McGarren, Southwest Metro District Teacher of the Blind, who's visually impaired, was named WCCO, excellent educator, Kim Johnson came there. And what is very unique about Beth, she is a person who is also visually impaired blind, and she teaches from that. At our meeting, she is quite often referred to, and what a great job she does. And so what a great thing for the Southwest Metro to have someone like that recognized.
Awesome. Thank you.
Finance Committee, getting ready for the revised budget to be ready, close or close. And that funding, everything's going great, really good.
We talked about our truth and taxation hearing that will be before December. Yep, on the audit happening. Lots of stuff happening there.
We also reviewed some numbers on the annual levy certification, which will need to happen prior to December 30th, which we will be planning to do at the December 11th meeting. Some things that Jean and I learned from going through a lot of data with our financial consultants, is that our net tax capacity across Tri-City United has grown a bit over this last year, a little bit over 3%, which means that there's more population to be able to spread the tax impact on. And so in situations where there might appear as a bottom line of a slight increase of the levy, in reality, with the increased tax base, that most property owners would see really a decrease. And so in order to be really fiscally frugal and being able to make sure that we're being cognizant of our operating funds, which is what levies do run as well, but also respectful to our taxpayers, we've taken that into account as we look to come forward with the levy certification on December 11th. But it's looking to be very, very low. As close, probably our third lowest in Tri-City United history. So it's a good sign.
Q Comp, we continue to revisit what our two hour early outs, what happened, what worked, what didn't work. And then we move on to the next early out that's going to happen. Again, we met last month, so the two earlier had already happened. And we just keep planning for what future. And the planning that we did back in June, as we come find out, it changes a little bit comparing to the needs that each staff has at each building, and the things that they need to further continue with their education also.
Facilities met. Kind of seeing what Kyle had tonight, does a lot of it. And then some upcoming projects that he had, having Eric have looked at to do to keep up their maintenance stuff, like they're trying to do, doing a great job at. We also, auction result from all this stuff out of the schools. I forgot, you helped me out. What was the number?
Around 2,736.
So, so pretty good auction overall. Freed up some room down in the areas that we needed it, so.
All right. Thank you all.
All right. Next we'll move on to the superintendent evaluation summary and goals. Is it probably best that we do the motion and then have the discussion? Or should we do it first?
Why don't we do it first?
Do the motion first, or do the discussion first?
Yep, do the overview.
Yep.
Then we would do the motion. And then there'd be any discussion that might need to be based upon what information is shared, otherwise, and move forward there.
As you guys know, we did superintendent's evaluation. Just to go over the quick process of what happened, we all participated in evaluation online, which was through the MSBA. And then once we completed our evaluation, MSBA compiled the results for us. And then we went over that with the superintendent Preisler at our last regular school board meeting during a closed session. In that closed session, there was the nine different, or the nine different questions, there were questions in each of those areas. And then you see the overall rating, let's say number one was a 4.14. So that was an average, in which we saw were a pie graph, is how we saw our evaluation. We just kind of changed it to an average would be a little bit easier for people to see and to take in. As you can see through those nine different areas, I went a little further and I did an average of all nine of those areas. And she was a 4.05 out of five, which is exactly where we would really like her to be at, and into further, further our, our future here at TCU. Some of the strengths that we went through, her instructional leadership is phenomenal. She takes us to places that we haven't seen- She takes us to, uh, places that we, um, haven't seen before and places that we'll go here in the future. Uh, our budget has been fantastic. She's done a great in-depth into that, even with our finance committee meetings. And, um, we've earned some awards there through the finance part of that, um, in doing what we need to do through the state. Also, her enthusiastic and, uh, her positiveness is very catching. Um, it's fun to watch her as, uh, we get all of our staff in here for the first day of teacher workshop and to see her do her thing in front of all the staff. It's, it's just very, um, it's, it's a very catching thing and it's fun to watch her as, uh, she's very, um, very enthusiastic as she gets everybody in there to, to do the new things that we need to do each and every year. Um, the initiative and her dependability are, uh, are great aspects that we have in our superintendent and things that we always wanna see in our superintendent. Also, um, some of the areas for growth, um, we had some great discussions and conversations in that evaluation. And it was just not only, um, growth for Herbert, growth for us as a school board too. Um, and student achievement is always one thing that will always be, um, forthright and foremost as far as, as an area for growth. Um, communication updates and support the, the board and our growth and goals, um, is something that we're working on ourselves, is doing new goals for ourself and hopefully presenting those in the near future. Um, community engagement and outreach, that's one thing that, um, we all really, really need to work on and, and what that entails and, and where we see that going. Um, having a communication person is, has been a tremendous asset to our district also for that. And also facilities, that will be a, one thing that's always going to be, um, something on the radar. Um, goals, uh, that, um, we see into the future, to improve student achievement, address the facility needs, prepare for strategic planning in two thousand eighteen, which will be coming up here quickly, and our communication and the community engagement. And from here, I'll let Terry kinda take the drive on that.
So, taking, um, your feedback as, and not only, uh, the strengths, but also areas for growth and particular goal areas, I've crafted, uh, district, but really superintendent, uh, goals and action plans for two thousand seventeen, eighteen. I am going to hit really the main goal areas and just highlight a few of the action steps or indicators, but I'm not going to go, you know, line by line by line. But what you would see within this first goal of the superintendent will, um, work to improve student achievement and close achievement gaps. You, you see some of the words I referenced earlier tonight within our site reports, which is so important. Uh, but some of the key aspects, it really is about getting depth. When we did our data summit this fall in August, you know, we have, um, some great results within our, um, regular skills, but it's when we apply them. And so, we know that that's a depth of knowledge and a, a core instructional piece that we're working on. And I really, kudos to our staff for taking that on, um, seriously. Uh, developing a strategic plan to expand pre-K programming, you heard that tonight, certainly an area. Implementing further career tech education opportunities for students, um, within TCU and educational partnerships. See this as a twofold. One being, um, a part of the bond referendum with having, with expanding and, and adding on a, um, three thousand square foot Ag Tech lab would be huge for some of the career tech ed things, programming and offerings we could do. And then also considering, continuing some of the partnerships with area schools and South Central, um, college in order to be able to work with our career pathways, which we are formulating to, I'll be offering the next school year already. Uh, continuing our empowering learners and, uh, again, avid elective, but avid school-wide as well. A core piece for instructional strategies, but making sure that we do this well in both the elective course, but also in spreading it out for all students. And our, our start this year has been outstanding. And so, some evidence that, uh, will be ways for you as a board to see that we have moved forward with these action steps and that I'll be monitoring. A second goal area, having to do with our facilities, uh, the superintendent will address the identified facility needs of one, space for growing enrollment, two, address structural maintenance needs, and three, improve school safety and security. And so, and some of the indicators in doing that is, uh, that as superintendent, I would be following through on the TCU Community Task Force on facilities as all, as well as our community survey, as well as you as a board in your decisions of the steps that you are needing and wanting us to move forward with addressing our facility needs. That I would be providing adequate and qual- or that we would provide adequate and quality space to meet instructional needs of our students. Coordinate a transparent and thorough communication plan for the bond referendum. Complete all state statute requirements to conduct a February thirteenth bond referendum. Expand communication and district public relations inclusive of digital formats and attend established community groups meetings such as local chambers, parent councils, and address the additional safety and health and deferred maintenance needs through long-term facilities. This is important to realize, our facilities needs, as much as that bond is going to be, uh, extremely important, we will have ongoing deferred, um, maintenance needs that need to be addressed through the long-term facilities. We can't be, um, sacrificing long-term facilities to take care of these large needs because this stuff then will all fall, fall behind again. And we can't allow that to happen. A third goal area, uh, that, uh, we are hitting that timeline for is creating a strategic roadmap process during the second half of two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year and into the eighteen nineteen. So, you know, we are reaching our, our, really our sixth year, which we purposely chose to make that a sixth year because of the start of Tri-City United. Um, and our next one would be at least, would be about a three to five year, but more likely a five year strategic, um, plan. And so, you don't see a lot of indicators here because these are going to be huge, along with the, the facilities goal. But what, uh, we'd be doing is to develop a process and present it to you, um, as a school board for how you'd like to proceed, to ensure that we have inclusiveness, um, within the stakeholder groups and also the thorough data analysis of our school district and the plan process for moving us forward. And then a fourth goal area, um, would be to continue to expand, promote, and enhance district communications and accurate exchange of information about district operations, policies, events, and student recognitions with all constituencies using all available media technologies. And so, this is a combination of both, uh, continuing to promote the understanding and ownership of our district's mission, beliefs, vision, by making sure that we're really telling our, telling our story and that we're doing it in a thorough manner. Um, that we increase our opportunities to promote Tri-City United with constituents and throughout our region. Uh, to ensure ongoing, clear, and consistent communication throughout Tri-City United School District, maintain open relationships with town, county, and state political leaders, developing clear lines of communication, advocacy, and support for district students, communicate opportunities, excellence, positive attributes, and programs provided here at TCU, facilitate open two-way communication that promotes collaborative dialogue among students, staff, residents, community stakeholders, and engage and communicate with legislators at the state level to address funding and equities throughout the state of Minnesota. Um, we still have a lot of work to do in that area. There is no question that greater Minnesota, uh, is at a different level than what our metro and, uh, urban districts are. And we have to continue to advocate for equity across the state and funding. So, those would be the, the, even though there are numerous other areas and work that is to be done, um, these would be the four main goal areas that I would be focusing on and striving to lead us as a district to move forward based upon our past data, your feedback, and where we need to go as a district.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So, at this point, it'd be a motion to, um, approve both evaluation and the, uh, the goals being set. And then any other discussion or questions you may have of me.
I'll seek that motion.
So, move.
Second.
I have a motion by Dale Boss, second by Danny Rudd, to approve the two thousand sixteen, seventeen superintendent evaluation and the two thousand seventeen, eighteen goals and action plans. Any questions, comments?
Thanks for taking the time to listen to us about it and to come, God, I think the time that you took to put into that is great. So, thanks.
And I do appreciate, um, our opportunity to, to dialogue about where we are and where you see me as your district's leader. Thanks.
All right. Uh, motion is on the table. Um, are those approved? Are those, I'm like all messed up. I need just, okay. The motion is on the table. We have Dale Boss, second by Danny Rudd, to approve the two thousand sixteen, seventeen superintendent evaluation and the seventeen, eighteen goals and action plans. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is passed, seven zero. All right. Next, we have a resolution to establish the location for absentee voting.
This is a required resolution, uh, in order to be conducting a bond referendum. As you know, we've already done the resolution on setting our election date, combined polling locations. That was done at the beginning of the school year, which will be an annual process. This one, the resolution, is to focus on the location for our early or absentee voting and then also to designate the clerk to designate our absentee voter, voter. Reviews, I know. It's, uh, allowing the clerk to designate and all that. So, giving big power to our clerk, but in reality, it, it, it does become the, the county auditor of the, a county that is usually the majority of the district. So.
Resolution establishing the location for absentee voting and an absentee ballot board for school district election is not held on the day of a statewide election, being resolved by the school board of independent school district number two nine zero five, Tri-City United Public Schools, Minnesota as follows. Is hereby found, determined, and declared as follows. The board hereby establishes the independent school district number two nine zero five, Tri-City United Public Schools, Minnesota District Offices, one oh one, Second Street Northeast, Montgomery, Minnesota, five six zero six nine, as the location for absentee voting with respect to district elections not held on the day of a statewide election. This board hereby establishes a ballot board to pro- to process, accept, and reject absentee ballots with respect to district elections not held, um, the day of a statewide election pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section two zero three B one twenty-one. The ballot board shall consist of sufficient number of election judges trained in the handling of absentee ballots. The election judges shall be appointed as provided in Minnesota Statute Section two nine, two zero four B one nine through two zero four B twenty-two. The ballot board may include district staff members trained as election judges. The clerk or the clerk's designee is hereby authorized and directed to appoint the members of the ballot board. The clerk or the clerk's designee shall establish, maintain, and update a roster of members appointed to and currently serving on the ballot board and shall report to this board from time to time as to its status. Each member of the ballot board shall be paid reasonable compensation for services rendered during an election at the same rate as other election judges. Provided, however, the district staff members receiving compensation for regular duties shall not receive additional payment for ballot board duties performed during the regular workday.
All right. Since this is a, um, resolution, it'll be a roll call vote. Ashley?
Yes.
Michelle? Dale?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Yes.
And Kevin. I also need a second on this resolution.
I'll just second.
And Marcia would be a yes. Uh, resolution has passed by a majority roll call vote. Um, then we'll seek a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Dan Rudd, second by Michelle Bokart, to adjourn the meeting at eight oh four P M. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is passed, seven zero. Meeting is adjourned.